I call to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden.
Here.
Counselor Coletta.
Here.
Counselor Durkin. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Louie Jean.
Here.
Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Peppin.
Here.
Counselor Santana. Counselor Weber. And Counselor Worrell. The quorum is present.
Thank you. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy Pastor Kiki Jefo Flérisant. Pastor Jefo Jean Flérisant, affectionately known as Pastor Kiki, is a profound figure within the Haitian community and beyond. Born in Haiti, he moved to the USA at the age of 20 as an undocumented immigrant, overcoming significant challenges, including homelessness in Brooklyn, New York. His early experiences shaped his commitment to advocacy, leading him to establish the Committee for the Defense of Immigrants in 1993, which mobilized support for Haitian rights in the United States. A graduate of Bunker Hill Community College and Gordon College, Pastor Kiki furthered his theological education at Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary, earning both a Master of Divinity and a Master of Theology. He's currently pursuing a Doctor of Ministry. Pastor Kiki's leadership extends across multiple fronts. He's the president of the True Alliance Center, Chair of Haitian Americans United Incorporated, and an executive team member of Greater Boston Interfaith Organization. His dedication to social and economic issues is also evident throughout through his roles with various community organizations, including the Greater Boston Nazarene Compassion Center and Mattapan Square Main Streets. In his ministry, Pastor Kiki is deeply committed to missionary work, regularly traveling to places like the Bahamas and Haiti to teach and inspire. At home, he impacts lives through his radio and television program, discussing spiritual, social, and economic topics. His professional journey and professional endeavors epitomize his lifelong commitment to service, leadership, and empowerment of immigrant communities. I am very lucky to count Pastor Kiki as a friend, a second father, in addition to my actual father, who is also here, as a spiritual mentor, and for all that you do in Haitian Heritage Month, which we are now recognizing and all the time. Pastor Kiki, thank you, and you now have the floor.
Thank you so very much, Counselor Louie Jean. So grateful for your leadership, and thank you for having me. And good afternoon to all distinguished members of the city council and all of the audience here today. And I just want to wish you a happy Haitian Heritage Month and hope to see you at all of the incoming events. Now, let us pray. Would you please stand with me as we're about to pray, and I ask God to continue to guide and to lead us? Heavenly Father, as we gather in this hollowed chamber, a place of great significance, we acknowledge your divine presence. We humbly seek your guidance as we embark on the different task. Lord, bless this assembly with wisdom and compassion that transcends all understanding, as your word says in Philippians 4, verse 6 and 7. May your peace guard our hearts and our thoughts. Grant our leaders the strength to govern with integrity and the courage to make just and righteous decisions in your sight. May they lead not by might, nor by power, but by your Spirit, fostering unity and peace among them. As they gather to discuss the budget and navigate through figures of financial constraint, we pray that you empower them with discernment and the foresight to make decisions that serve the best interests of your communities. Lord, we acknowledge that all good things come from you, and we deepen on your provision in times of plenty and in times of need. Grant our leaders the courage to prioritize wisely, the humility to seek counsel, and the integrity to govern with transparency and justice. In this time of uncertainty and limited resources, fill their discussions with a spirit of cooperation and mutual respect. Please help them to see beyond the immediacy of financial challenges and to envision a future that ensures the well-being and prosperity of all citizens. Strengthen them, Father, with love, Lord, and remind them that they can find abundance and hope in you. May their decisions reflect your compassion and lead them, Father, toward excellence, stability, and peace. Father, we thank you for being with them every step, all the way, and let us let them draw inspiration from you, and let them persevere, Father, in unity as well as when they face adversity. Bless our precedents today so that they may bring progress and prosperity to our city. Protect and prosper our communities, and help us to be agents of change and ambassadors of hope in every encounter. As many people address you by many names, I pray through your precious son named Jesus Christ, amen. Thank you.
We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you so much, Pastor Kiki, for that invocation. Merci. 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 Thank you so much. Mr. Clerk, would you please amend the attendance to reflect that Counselors Durkin, Fernandez-Anderson, Santana, and Worrell are now present? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We will now have Counselor Murphy hosting a presentation honoring the Boston Police for National Police Week. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor in five minutes.
Thank you, and Counselor Flynn is going to join me. And if could the police come and join us here up at the podium, please, before we start? Yeah, come on. We'll all fit. We have our union leaders, but also police officers from the district here. Thank you all. You can fit. Okay. So, we did want to present you with an official resolution. This week, Police Week began in 1962, when President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation designating May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in the week in which it falls as National Police Week. This week offers honor and remembrance as we pay homage to those who gave their lives in the line of duty. The Boston Police Department has been acknowledged on a national level for their exemplary community policing efforts. We have many of our community police with us here today. The department's commitment to building strong relationships with the community and prioritizing collaboration and trust has not gone unnoticed. This is a testament to the dedication and hard work of the Boston Police Offices in fostering a safe and inclusive environment for all of our residents. So as we honor and remember our law enforcement offices this week, let us also recognize the sacrifices the brave men and women of the Boston Police Department make on our behalf every day, and I also want to recognize their families. We know that when you serve, your family serves also, and we just today will be voting on our third and final contract, so thank you for all the hard work the union leaders have put in to make sure that we have fair contracts for our police offices across the city. So, the Boston City Council recognizes May 12th through the 18th as National Police Week in the city of Boston, and we thank the members of the Boston Police. Each of you have your own citation, so the Superior Officers Federation, the patrolmen, and also the benevolent detectives. And I'll let Counselor Flynn say a few words.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy, and honored to be here with the men and women of the Boston Police Department. We're celebrating the important role they play in our city and in our country, but we also recognize, as Counselor Murphy highlighted, the incredible sacrifice as well of police officers and their families. Their families have been through a lot over the years, but the families and the police officers have always been there for the residents of the city during good times and bad times. We want to say thank you to the men and women of the Boston Police Department for their incredible sacrifice and professionalism to the residents of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes in the meeting on May 8th, 2024. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the last minute, the minutes of the last meeting are approved. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0836 and 0837?
Docket number 0836, notice was received from the mayor for absence from the city on Thursday, May 9th, 2024, at 11:15 a.m., returning Saturday, May 11th, 2024, at 12 p.m. Docket number 0837, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting on May 1st, 2024.
Thank you. Dockets number 0836 and 0837 will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0832, 0838?
Docket number 0838, the constable bond for Lucille Torres having been duly approved by the collective treasurer was received.
Thank you. Docket number 0838 is approved under the usual terms and conditions. We are now on to matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read dockets number 0744 and 0745.
Docket number 0744, message in order for your approval, an order to reduce fiscal year 24 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $7,754,649 to provide funding for the Boston Police Department for fiscal 24 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the Boston Police Superior Officers Federation, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 29, 2024.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counselor Worrell. Oh, apologies. Continue, Mr. Clerk.
Docket number 0745, message in order for a supplemental appropriation of the Boston Police Department for fiscal year 24 in the amount of $7,754,649 to cover the fiscal year 24 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Boston and the Boston Superior Officers Federation. The terms of the contract are July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2025. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5%, 2%, 1%, and 2.5% to be given in July of each fiscal year of the contract term, as well as the addition of the Transitional Career Award Program in July 2023. The contract also contains reforms relating to discipline, office return to duty paid detail system, and union release.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Worrell, the chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Louie Jean, and happy Police Week, and I just want to give a shout out to our union reps that are in attendance. The Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing on Monday to discuss dockets number 044 through 045. The committee was joined by James Williamson, Budget Director for the city of Boston, Renee Bushy, Director of Labor for the city of Boston, and Jennifer McConishy, Director of Strategic Initiatives and Policies, who provided testimony on behalf of the administration. The councils in attendance for the hearing were Counselors Murphy, Santana, Coletta, Fernandez-Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Weber, and Vice Chair Peppin, and Counsel President Louie Jean. Director Williamson explained that the dockets number 044 through 0745 will allocate $7,754,649 from the reserve for collective bargaining to the Boston Police Department for costs related to the collective bargain agreement with the Boston Police Superior Officers Federation. He also noted that the FY25, FY24 budget initially included $76.2 million for collective bargaining, with $59.5 million already appropriated through 13 supplemental appropriations since July 2023, leaving $8.9 million in the reserve. Ms. Bushy detailed that the agreement reflects similar police reforms found in recent BPD agreements, including adjustments in discipline, duty returns in union release times, and the detail system. It also enhances the police commission's authority over the operations division supervision. Councils discussed several issues, including the operations division supervision, officer fitness determinations, disciplinary reforms, pay increases, central booking, and overtime funding. As chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend that these dockets ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Worrell. The chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0744. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Mr. Clerk, would you please do a, conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0744. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes.
Thank you. The committee report on...
Eleven votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. The committee report on docket number 0744 has passed. The chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0745. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0745. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber. Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number 0745 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. The committee report on docket number 0745 has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read dockets number 0670 through 0678?
Dockets numbers 0670 through 0672, orders for the fiscal year 25 operating budget, including annual appropriations for departmental operations for the school department and for other post-employment benefits, also known as OPET. Dockets numbers 0673 through 0675, orders for capital grant fund credited appropriations, and dockets 0676 through 0678, orders for the capital budget, including loan orders and lease purchase agreements.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Worrell, the chair on the Committee of, the chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. As chair of the Ways and Means Committee, we hosted five FY25 budget hearings this past week. To give a brief overview, on May 9th, we held a hearing at 10 a.m. to go over the budget for the Department of Innovation and Technology and related revolving funds. From the administration, we had Chief Information Officer Garcia, Chief of Staff Kerry Jordan, and Director of Operations Sheila Lee. Council attendants included Counselors Murphy, Weber, Coletta, Braden, Flynn, Santana, Fernandez-Anderson, Durkin, and Counsel President Louie Jean. At the hearing, we discussed the Department of Innovation and Technology FY25 budget, which includes a $53.1 million operational budget and $8.5 million for capital investments aimed at enhancing technology services across various city departments. The focus was on modernizing the city's permitting and license system, and significant technology and security upgrades like a new street data management system to improve city operations and emergency responses. We also talked about the enhancement of internet access for public housing residents and other vulnerable groups, challenges including the uncertain future of federal funding, crucial for maintaining digital access for low-income households. On May 13th, we held a hearing at 10 a.m. to go over the FY25 budget for the Boston Police Department around mental health, substance abuse response, firearms, homicide, surveillance equipment, and cold cases. From the administration, we had Commissioner Cox, Superintendent Chief Greg Long, Chief of Staff Nicole Taub, Bureau Chief Administration and Technology Lisa O'Brien, Deputy Superintendent Dan Humphries, Superintendent Felipe Colon. All councils were in attendance, including Counselors Murphy, Fitzgerald, Braden, Coletta, Peppin, Weber, Santana, Fernandez-Anderson, Flynn, Mejia, Durkin, and Counsel President Louie Jean. We discussed the practical effectiveness and reliability of SHOTSPARDA technology in crime detection, including the fact that the new three-year contract might be signed before the council reviews dated by the May, by the May 31st reporting deadline. We also discussed issues with the crime lab, including the lack of a director, delays in sexual assault kits, and no-way testing. The commission explained the 547 vacancies in the department, which include 253 sworn officers and 294 civilian positions. Chief O'Brien detailed that in the past three years, the annual average of officers who leave the force is 131, and the annual average of new officers is 108, who are not keeping up with attrition. Additionally, the department detailed plans for a new promotion exam, while councils pointed out the current promotional system was heavily favored white men in the ranks of sergeants, lieutenants, and captains. Later on Monday, we held a hearing at 3:30 p.m. to go over the budget for the Boston Police Department around overtime detail system, officer mental health, and central booking. From the administration, we had Commissioner Cox, Superintendent Chief Greg Long, Chief of Staff Nicole Taub, Bureau Chief Administration and Technology Liz O'Brien, Deputy Superintendent Dan Humphries, Superintendent Felipe Colon. From the Boston City Council, we had Counselors Fernandez-Anderson, Murphy, Santana, Coletta, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Peppin, Mejia, Weber, Durkin, and Counsel President Louie Jean. The discussion centered on the effectiveness and allocation of overtime, of which the three main drivers are extended tours, replacement shifts, and special events. The council also heard about the status of the detailed changes agreed upon in recent police contracts. Additionally, Commissioner Cox described the use of central booking as a way to cut costs and provide, and provide care for some of those detained near mass and cast. In regards to mental health, the council recounted the toll that officers have said working double shift can have on their physical and mental health, and Commissioner Cox described the mental health supports now in place. Yesterday, May 14th, we had, we held a hearing at 10 a.m. to go over the budget for the Boston Public Health Commission, including topics such as infectious disease, child adolescent and family health, violence prevention, and behavioral health and wellness. From the administration, we had Dr. Basola Ojokuuto, Commissioner of Public Health and Executive Director for BPAC, and we also had Timothy Harrington, Director of Administration and Finance for BPAC. On the Boston City Council, we had Counselors Fernandez-Anderson, Flynn, Braden, Mejia, Fitzgerald, Weber, Murphy, Durkin, and Santana. The discussion, the discussions included prioritizing mental health and violence prevention, an agent study on health outcomes, more funded for the best team, staffing for tuberculosis clinics, the creation of a domestic violence and sexual assault bureau, the residency required for BPAC nurses, youth mental health, low threshold sites for mass and cast, and addressing disparities in infant and maternal house. There was a push for increased funding to support unsheltered residents, initiatives like the fetal infant mortality review to reduce infant mortality rates, and the expansion of home visiting services to assist at-risk families. Concerns were raised about emergency preparedness and the potential impacts of hospital closures, underlying the necessity for robust support in mental and public health services. Public testimony included a push for more support for nurse practitioners at the eight school-based public health centers, and financial support for a pilot at other mental health crisis response model. And lastly, yesterday, we met again at 2 p.m. to go over the budget for the Boston Public Health Commission, and those topics included Boston EMS, recovery services, and homeless services. From the administration, we had Dr. Basola Ojokuuto, Commissioner of Public Health and Executive Director for BPAC, Timothy Harrington, Director of Administration and Finance for BPAC, and James Houli, Chief of Boston Emergency Medical Services. We were joined by Vice Chair Peppin, Counselors Flynn, Braden, Mejia, Santana, Weber, Murphy, Coletta, Fernandez-Anderson, and Counsel President Louie Jean. Discussions focused on EMS and the plans and needs for capital improvements in new facilities in Austin-Brighton, Charlestown, and East Boston, response times, and the cost of that, and 12 more EMS technicians were discussed, as the staff will move from 428 to 440 in fiscal, fiscal year 2025. Elsewhere at BPAC, Director Harrington noted there are 150 job vacancies, additionally expanding overdose training and accessibility, using settlement funds for community-based organization and training, bringing Long Island recovery services back online, we'll discuss. The council also heard about BPAC's efforts enforcing the noise ordinance and the coordination with DUI. Each hearing has provided important insight for improving city governance. For more information, please check out the latest council newsletter that was sent today. I want to thank all the councils for the collaboration in the budget process, and I want to give you just a big shout out to Central Staff, Shane, Karishma, Ethan, the whole team, for all their good work. I reminded that we're at the Lila Frederick tomorrow night at 6 for our hearing on age strong and youth jobs, and these orders will remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell, and to add on to the people you were thanking, I want to continue to thank you as you shepherd us through this budget process, so thank you. Dockets number 0670 to 0678 will remain in committee. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0839?
Docket number 0839, Counselor Worrell offered the following: petitions for a special law, an act directing the city of Boston Police Department to waive the maximum age requirement for police officers for Elsie Barbosa.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Louie Jean, and this is just an age waiver for Elsie Barbosa, who has lived in Dorchester for her entire life, and has both strong connections throughout the city for much of her life. So just looking forward to the hearing so we can hear a little bit more about Elsie, and looking forward to passing this in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Elsie is amazing, an amazing mother, an exemplary constituent, your decision, not mine, but exemplary citizen, someone who's dedicated her life to community service, to working in, in the city of Boston, and to dedicating... in, in the city of Boston, and to dedicating herself to advocacy and activism. So I am just rising to go in support of this, and I guess we're going to a hearing. Look forward to that conversation in advocating for Elsie. She deserves it, and I hope that all of my colleagues will feel the same at the end of the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, and please add the Chair. Docket number zero six zero eight three nine will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number zero eight four zero?
Docket number zero eight four zero. Counselors Peppin and Worrell offered the following. Order for a hearing to discuss the creation of a, a small business vandalism relief fund.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Peppin. Counsel Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This idea was created in my office due to recent activities that happened in my district. I just want to highlight Effie's Kitchen, Rosy Bound, and a few other businesses that have been recent, just they've, they've experienced recent vandalism. They've experienced rose, broken windows, graffiti on their storefronts, and I feel for them because in my district, I have three Main Street corridors, Mattapan Square, Cleary Square, and Rosinell Square, and all of them are filled with amazing small businesses. Most of them mom-and-pop shops that they live in the community, they own their businesses, and they employ local, local residents. And just to fix a window, we were able to find out that it costs anywhere between five-hundred dollars to five thousand dollars for any business owner. And for those kind of businesses, it's not very often that they casually just have five-thousand dollars set aside for these kind of incidents. And some of them unfortunately don't even have the right insurance for this. So we did a bit of research. We found out that cities like San Francisco, California, and Jacksonville, Florida have established a very good program to provide grants to local businesses like these that if they experience, if they experience any type of vandalism or any just damage to their storefronts, the city, in this case, the city of Boston, will step up and provide a grant. It could be a small dollar amount of a few thousand dollars to help the businesses. And I think that this could go a long way. I think that we are in the right time to have this conversation with the budget conversation happening at the moment, and I believe that helping the resident, helping the business owners in our communities would just be good not only for those business owners, but also for the communities. Because many times if, when you, when you walk in your, in your square, in this case, Rosinell Square, Cleary Square, and Mattapan Square, if your businesses don't look good, the residents won't feel good, and it takes away business from those communities. So I just want to make sure that our small business owners feel supported. I want to make sure that the City of Boston is doing something about it, and I, I am honored to, to just bring this to the, to the floor, and hopefully my colleagues and council are able to support this because I'm, I know that our, our entire city of Boston has great business owners and great businesses that would benefit from this, from this program. That's, I yield the rest of my time, Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Peppin. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President, and thank you, Counsel Peppin, for adding me as an original co-sponsor. Vandalism not only impacts the physical spaces of our small businesses, but places a financial strain on them as Counsel Peppin has outlined. The average cost of vandalism is significant, yet the impact extends beyond just, you know, just the dollars. It affects community morale and the vibrancy of our neighborhoods. As we discussed during the Office of Economic and Inclusion Opportunity budget hearing, expanding services for the graffiti busters services, and grants a couple more types of vandalism-related damages is essential. We owe to our small businesses to explore all avenues to help them mitigate these challenges. In this hearing, we're, we're looking to see what we can do as a city to make sure that we're providing as much support to, to our small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, please add the Chair. Docket number zero eight four zero will be referred to the Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenseure. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number zero eight four one? Just wanted to make sure. Mr. Clerk, hold one moment.
Seven four five.
Okay, making a motion for reconsideration to add.
Yes.
Counsel Peppin to, your vote to which?
Zero seven four four and zero seven four five.
Okay. Absent any objection from the council, Mr. Clerk, can you please add Counsel Peppin to those dockets? Voting in the affirmative. Counsel Weber, would you also like to reconsider?
Yes, I would like to also add my name.
We first have to recognize you as being present, so, Mr. Clerk, can you please amend the record to add, to note that Counsel Weber has now joined us and is present? Thank you, and now we can honor your, your request.
Thank you. I'd also like to, you know, add my name in support of docket numbers seven four four and seven four five.
Thank you. Absent objection from any member of the council, that motion is allowed, and, Mr. Clerk, can you please add Counsel Weber to those docket numbers? Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number zero eight four one?
Docket number zero eight four one. Counselors Durkin and Braden offered the following. Order for a hearing to discuss enforcement of short-term rental violations in Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Counsel President. The city of Boston covers forty-eight square miles with more than six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand residents, and we have over twenty-three neighborhoods, each with their own style and personality, making the city a premier tourist destination that welcomes over eighteen million visitors each year. As such, Boston has seen rapid expansion of short-term rental industry facilitated by online home-sharing platforms, which has had a bad, the bad effect of removing already limited housing for residents. An ordinance from twenty eighteen by the City Council represents a shared goal of providing economic opportunity for residents and unique accommodations for visitors while preserving Boston's housing stock. The short-term rental ordinance establishes guidelines and regulations to better track and regulate short-term rentals in the city. The new regulations aim to capture Boston's growing home-share industry via a registry, which includes deterrence to prevent operators from monopolizing Boston's housing market with short-term rentals. In addition, the regulations provide a standardized framework for regulating these units that both meet the evolving needs of the industry, provide protections for occupants, and minimize the impact on surrounding neighbors of these units. Unfortunately, we are not seeing this ordinance bear the fruit that we once hoped. The city of Boston has to oversee over a thousand short-term rental properties, and data from Analyze Boston reveals that many of these properties are repeat offenders for code violations, including improper trash storage. Code violations often go unpaid and rarely impact a property's ability to renew their license. As a resident of Anderson Street, walking around Beacon Hill, I see code enforcement violations associated with the same properties over and over and over again. As, I'm eager to invite representatives from ISD, the Problem Properties Task Force, Public Works, Assessing. We need answers to questions like, is our short-term rental ordinance being enforced? How can the system be updated and share information with Assessing, the Tax Department? How do applications get approved? And are applications being doled out a license number without any, without any process for, you know, if a license should be suspended? Is there even a way for us to do that? How can code enforcement and the short-term rental share information to automatically trigger suspensions? And where is applicant contact information being stored? The details of all the ordinances we passed in the City Council and the details of their enforcement is really important. I mean, all the work that we do here and all the time that gets spent to pass legislation and then to see potentially it, you know, not really bearing out and not really creating the benefits that we hoped for the community. Again, as District Eight City Councilor, as a counselor to many diverse neighborhoods that are facing a lot of issues, I, I, this is a really important conversation to be happening, and I want to thank Counselor Liz Braden for being my second co-sponsor, and I'm sorry I didn't do this earlier, but I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Santana as the third co-sponsor.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. Counselor Durkin sees suspension of the rules to add Counsel Santana as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Santana is so added. Counsel Durkin, do you have anything more? You're all set? Okay. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and, and thank you to Counsel Durkin for including me as an original co-sponsor on this hearing order. The ordinance regulating short-term rentals was passed on Chapter Five of the ordinances of twenty eighteen and was codified in the city code in Chapter Nine, Section fourteen. The registration of short-term rentals opened on January first, nineteen nineteen, and the Department of Innovation and Technology, DUIT, published a short-term rental eligibility dataset to help residents, property owners, and city officials determine whether a property is eligible to be registered. The ordinance, as it exists, takes a three-tiered approach to classifying units. Limited share unit is a private bedroom or shared space in an owner-occupied private residence, primary residence, and the operator is present during the rental. The home-share unit is a whole unit in the primary residence of an owner-occupier and the unit in which the operator resides for nine months a year. And the owner-adjacent unit is an owner-occupied two- or three-family building in, in which the owner lists a, a sec, a single secondary unit as a short-term rental. Any property with an outstanding violation of the short-term rental ordinance or, or the housing, sanitary, building, fire, or zoning code is prohibited. So to Counsel Durkin's point earlier, she's, we see a lot of code violations. Those code violations, if they're persistent, i.e., in my opinion, should trigger a review of their registration and have them be prohibited from operating as a short-term rental, in my humble opinion. But that's for, that's for a hearing to discuss. In the fall of twenty eighteen, the city issued an RFP for a vendor to assist with the monitoring and operating solution to aid implementation. The vendor was to monitor listings across platforms and provide a targeted list of likely violations. The study stated that it would build a license application in-house and was not seeking a license registration or renewal, and was not seeking a license registration and renewal application system, but actually more a system for monitoring behavior within. The short-term rental regulations have now been in effect for five and a half years. We hear, we hear stories of, of folks who are not good actors, who are breaking the code, city code, sanitary code violations, et cetera. Noise ordinances have been broken. There's a lot of things to review, so I really welcome this, this hearing. It's a timely discussion to enforce, on enforcement performance and enhancements that we may need to add to the existing short-term rental ordinance, and I look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The Chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Durkin for sponsoring this hearing order and including me as a co-sponsor, and thanks to Counselor Braden for joining as a co-sponsor as well. Counselor Durkin and Braden have covered the purpose and importance of this hearing order, so I'll be brief. I'd just like to emphasize one main point. Short-term rentals are a valuable option for Boston visitors and can provide useful alternatives to hotels and other options, but that can also come at a cost of displacing housing for our long-term residents, and without thoughtful policies in place, short-term rentals can distort our housing market, driving up rents even more when we already have a housing affordability crisis. Boston has actually done good work on this, put in regulations on short-term rentals in place in twenty eighteen to help ensure we don't end up with bad side effects for housing affordability. But those regulations are only effective if they're enforced, and if we ensure we don't have loopholes. With years of experience and data in hand, we're in good position now to assess how the city is handling enforcement and any impact of short-term rentals that should be addressed. I'm looking forward to this discussion, and I hope many of my council colleagues will join the hearing order to work on this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Santana. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank the maker for this important hearing order. As someone who voted for the city's short-term rental ordinance and was a strong advocate for no investor units in that process, I know how important this discussion is to residents across the city. We all know about Boston's housing crisis. The last thing we need to do is allow for large multinational corporations to buy up our housing stock, operate these unregulated de facto hotels. They drive up the housing market, create quality-of-life concerns with ongoing parties across many neighborhoods, especially in the weekends. Problems with trash removal, pest control, blocking drivers with the cars. I should know, I have an Airbnb directly next to me in South Boston. In twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one, I worked directly with colleagues like then City Council Lydia Edwards, now State Senator, and City Councilor-at-Large Michelle Wu, now Mayor Wu, on hearings on the implementation on the short-term rental ordinance. Was it, was it perfect? No, but we had to address it. My focus has remained on potential issues or loopholes that may exist, as well as concerns regarding the eligibility requirement, required for enforcement of this ordinance. My colleagues mentioned the important work of ISD, and I know that ISD had only required two of the following as primary residence evidence that an Airbnb needed to show. Proof of residential exemption, a utility bill, a voter registration, a motor vehicle registration, a deed, a driver's license, or a state-issued ID. I think we need to require more proof and steps to prove, to prove that people do live there full-time. Many of them are claiming that they live, they live there, and it's not accurate. Residents remain concerned about people still operating Airbnb and not being owner-occupied like they're supposed to be. I have notified the city about a case recently on E Street in South Boston, where neighbors insist the person is not living there, and this has been going on for a long period of time. I have opposed every proposal for executive suites as well that have come to the ZBA because I don't want to see these large multinational corporations play games with the spirit of the ordinance. I know the Zoning Board of Appeals did approve the conversion of residential units into executive suites in the city from a corporate operator in the past, which I opposed. Recently, on Stanhope Street, in the area of the Back Bay that I represent, a residential building was bought by a corporate operator with the intention to convert that building into executive suites or medical stays. We need to be one-hundred percent certain that this will not be exploited as a loophole, and if it is indeed the carve-out for medical and business stays, otherwise it should be denied. While we have a short-term rental ordinance in place, we need to continue working together to fine-tune any potential loopholes, providing proof of evidence that properties are owner-occupied. Enforcement is critical in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I rise to thank the sponsors. I actually reached out to be a fourth, fifth co-sponsor. I don't know how many people reached out, but this is incredibly welcomed. We've had significant issues in the North End before this ordinance was, was put in place, and then after the ordinance was put in place, we found out that there was a ton of short-term rentals on mass Portland in East Boston, so trying to figure out what the jurisdictional issues were there and what enforcement looked like. But I've been working with many folks, those as part of AdCo, to deal with this loophole of executive suites, and we've been trying to, to figure out what to do if that's a regulatory change, and I hope that some of the conversations will focus on that, as Counsel Flynn mentioned. In October twenty twenty-two, I had come out and asked for a deferral of a project that was in the North End because of this executive suite loophole and the need to figure out what to do with it. But we do need to define it, only because it is left up to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and so it, it produces this ad hoc regulatory system left to the discretion of that board. That existing loophole allows the suites to operate with the same nightly minimums as hotels without comparable licensing processes, safety procedures, or community oversight. Moreover, ISD has limited enforcement mechanisms when conditions are granted by the ZBA and are weaker than those provided under the twenty eighteen short-term rental ordinance. Executive suites, we're talking about affordable housing and ways to get revenue for affordable housing. Executive suites are not subjected to a community impact fee that was established by the ordinance and imposed by the city. This fee was created to protect Boston's existing housing stock and assist with the creation of affordable housing in our neighborhoods. The operation of executive suites without financial obligation The operation of executive suites without financial obligation to this fee is antithetical to the spirit of this ordinance as they take units off the market, which could assist with overall affordable housing goals. So, again, just thank you to the makers. I really look forward to this conversation, hopefully producing some quick fixes to the existing ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Calata. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I want to thank the makers and, as well, looking forward to this conversation. I want to thank you all for your work, and it's important that we get this right. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, will you please add Counselors Calata, Fernanda Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Weber, Worrell, and please add the chair? Thank you. Docket number 0841 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0842?
Docket number 0842, Counsel Louie Jen offered the following: Resolution recognizing May as Haitian Heritage Month and May 18th as Haitian Flag Day.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council President Louie Jen. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. May, as many of you know, as I opened, the month of May stating May is Haitian Heritage Month, and it is a month that means a lot to me and to my family. Boston has the second-largest per capita Haitian diaspora in the United States, and it is one that has been here since the '60s. We are raising the Haitian flag at City Hall this Friday at noon, and I welcome everyone to come. I want to honor... The first Haitian flag raising was done in the late '90s here at City Hall by Police Officer Danberville, who actually was killed, the brother of Jesse Danberville, resident of Mattapan, and we have been continuing his legacy and his work ever since then. I don't think that there's enough time for me to describe the importance of this month or the importance of my heritage to who I am. I am forever grateful. You know, my dad can be very much, does annoying dad things, but one thing that my dad always did right for me and my sisters was making sure that we knew who we were and that we were grounded in our identity. I would, you know, my father was just centered education in everything that we did. And we had weekly meetings after he would come home from working crazy shifts down the street at Store 24, and we'd have weekly meetings where we would read this book in Creole called Timalis. And it's that way, even though I was born here, people are sometimes surprised that I speak Creole, but it's because of my father and reading those little Timalis books that I can read Creole, write Creole, and speak it. Even, there's a saying in Creole that even when your tongue is heavy, your tongue is there, and I speak Creole with an American accent, but I still speak it. And so I'm just incredibly grateful and proud of who I am and where I come from and my parents for taking such stock in teaching me that when I had nothing else, I had who I am, and that's my identity as someone who hails from the only country in the world founded from a slave revolt. The first free black republic in the Western Hemisphere, and the second free nation in the Western Hemisphere, the country that helped the United States during its own revolution before its own people could be free. So this flag means a lot to me. It means a lot to the Haitian people of Boston. It started, you know, Haiti, known as Quisqueya, the entire island, was under French rule, and it was originally the French tri-color flag of red, white, and blue. And in 1803, the then, what they would call mulattos and then say black folks came together and decided that they were going to fight together against the French for their independence. And so they ripped the white part out of the tri-color flag and put it together, and there was the red and the blue flag, and it has evolved since then. It was this flag in the late 1800s, and then there were different versions that came out, and then in 1986, we got, the year I was born, we got this flag back. There is tremendous pride in who we are, and there's a tremendous pain in what's happening right now on the island and on the safety and security of so many people. I am often at a loss of words to describe how heavy it is and myself. I wasn't even born there. I'm American and of Haitian descent, but for my parents, who would love to go and visit their native land for so many, it's a really heavy time right now. But I always say, and I said this, I wrote an op-ed in The Globe about Haiti a few weeks ago, that hope is the only thing that we have, and it's something that I will never let go of. I operate with a sustained hope that Haiti will rise in its glory and will take its place in history. And so I want to thank everyone who celebrates the Haitian community, but not only celebrates. It's not just about celebration. It's about being a true partner and a true advocate in the needs that the Haitian community faces in the city of Boston and in the entire country. I've said this in every meeting at every level, whether with, you know, federal lawmakers, state lawmakers, us here on the city council. It's not just about the celebration that I hope everyone will be at on Friday. It's about making sure that we are a partner in the work, that we are standing with the Haitian community when we face anti-blackness, when we face anti-immigrant sentiments, when we face xenophobia, when our kids need resources and learning in school, when folks face barriers in, at the workplace, whether as security workers, as our cleaners, as our workers at our local universities. We need and we call on your support. So I thank the ancestors, I thank Catherine Flon for giving us this, for starting the Haitian flag, and for all the people who toiled to make it what it is. I think my parents, I think Pasta Kiki for all the incredible work that you do in the Haitian community, and I just want to just continue to ask for your solidarity and your support on Flag Day, which is our biggest holiday. It's actually not Independence Day on May 18th, it's our Flag Day where we celebrate this flag and the meaning it has, which is incredibly special. It is a moment of joy, and so there will also be a parade on Sunday at 12:45, 12:30, 12:45, that starts in Mattapan Square and goes all the way to Harambe Park in Dorchester led by the Haitian Americans United. And so, yes, thank you. Happy Haitian Flag Day, and just briefly, moi vle di, merci à tout monde parce que moi, moi, moi c'est ouais, c'est amerique, puis c'est papa m'qui fait m'connait qui est ce moyen? Moi dis papa merci, lila, l'it toujours là, là toujours et qui aime. Et puis c'est pas seulement pour nous fêter, c'est pour nous célébrer. Oui, mais c'est pour nous faire travailler là, pour commettre, c'est la Creole communauté solide là, na Boston, pour nous ca jouer, aide et support qui nous besoin, pas seulement les fêtes d'apôtre, mais chaque jour. Moi dit tout le monde merci. I say thank you to everyone, and thank you again to my father, who is, in so many ways, my everything and who is here, even on the days where he is being very much a father. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Peppin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just want to stand in support and in partnership with our council president, Madam Louie Jen. I just want to honor her and say just how proud I am of her leadership, that I know what, I know the work that she does in the community. I was able to join her at the Mattapan for the kickoff of the Haitian Heritage Month. And just as the district council for District 5, home to what I believe is the biggest Haitian diaspora in the city of Boston, I'm honored to represent that community because we have amazing businesses, organizations like IFC, we have amazing community leaders, and I'm very proud that we are home to the first-ever school that is dual-lengual, dual-lengual in Haitian Creole, which is the Mattapan Elementary School. And I think that's something that I'm obviously very proud of, but that we, as a city, should be proud of, and I know that that goes unnoticed. And to the, to the community, I just want to show that, I just want to celebrate with you and just know that you have an advocate in me, and I'm willing to work, I'm going to work with our council president, Louie Jen, not only in this month, but throughout my tenure. So congratulations, I look forward to seeing you at the flag raising and at the parade on Sunday.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Fernanda Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam President, for filing, and to my honorable colleagues, I just want to share this. This is, I had to write this at least three times. This is not the first version. I thought, you know, keeping it in the spirit of celebration, I wanted to share a little bit of what, why I rise in support for this day. I stand before you today to advocate for a celebration of Haitian Flag Day in the city of Boston. This is not merely a symbolic gesture, rather it is recognition of the rich history, struggles, and resilience of the Haitian people, both in their homeland and the diaspora communities like the one we have here in Boston. A quick thing that I thought I wanted to highlight, on April 17th, 1825, the French King Charles X issued a decree demanding an exorbitant indemnity from Haiti in exchange for recognizing its independence. This demand, known as the Independence Debt, amounted to 150 million francs, 10 times the amount the United States paid for the Louisiana Territory. This unjust burden crippled Haiti's economy and hindered its development for generations to come. It directly contributed to the underfunding of crucial sectors such as education, healthcare, and infrastructure, perpetuating poverty and instability in the nation. Today, poverty remains a pervasive issue in Haiti, affecting the daily lives of its residents and driving many to seek opportunities abroad. Recent months have seen a surge in Haitian migrants fleeing violence, political instability, economic hardship, and natural disasters, also from international countries commoditizing this land for their own gain. This new wave of immigrant immigration reflects a deep-seated desperation and a loss of hope in the prospects for a better future in Haiti. As destination countries grapple with the influx of Haitian migrants, it is incumbent upon us to recognize and address the root causes of this migration. We cannot ignore the role that historical injustices, political turmoil, and economic deprivation have played in driving Haitians from their homeland, to most of it, no fault of their own. Instead, we must stand in solidarity with the Haitian people and advocate for the meaningful change, both domestically and internationally. The Haitian community in Boston contributes immensely to our city's cultural vibrancy, economic vitality, and social fabric. By celebrating Haitian Flag Day, we honor their heritage, recognize their contributions, and reaffirm our commitment to justice, equity, and inclusion for all. Furthermore, as representatives of the people, we have a responsibility to raise awareness about the plight of our Haitian brothers and sisters and to advocate for policies that support their rights and dignity right here in Boston. This includes condemning foreign interventions and supporting efforts to address the root causes of migration through diplomacy, aid, and developmental assistance. I urge my fellow council members to join our sister-in-service Madam President Ruthie Louie Jen, the first Haitian-American Boston City Councilor in commemorating Haitian Flag Day and standing in solidarity with the Haitian community in Boston and beyond. Let us send a powerful message to support empathy and unity, reaffirming our shared commitment to justice, human rights, and international solidarity. And on Sunday, je suis Haisien, don't listen to what Counsel President Louie Jen says. I'm Haitian on Sunday. I'm coming, mon pape, Haisien. I love you, and of course, in solidarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? As the district for Boston City Councilor, I have the honor to be serving a large Haitian community and getting to know a lot of the Haitian community leaders. I also want to just thank Council President Louie Jen for all your advocacy that you do in this space and for your community. Also, just want to just recognize that the flag embodies, you know, strength and resilience, and the Haitian community here in Boston is going to be on full display, is going to show us where there is unity, there is strength. Counsel Louie Jen seeks suspension of the rules. Oh, would anyone like to add their name? Please, Clerk, please add Counsel Braden, Counsel Calata, Counsel Durkin, Counsel Fernanda Anderson, Counsel Fitzgerald, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Peppin, Counsel Santana, Counsel Weber, and please add Counsel Worrell. Counsel Louie Jen seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0842. All those in favor say aye. The ayes have it. The docket number 0842 has been adopted. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0843?
Docket number 0843, Counselors Flynn and Murphy offer the following: Resolution calling on the Massachusetts Legislature to pass an act establishing protections and accountability for TNC and DNC workers.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I suspend Rule 12 and add Counsel Fitzgerald, please?
Counselor Flynn, it's a suspension of the rules to add Counsel Fitzgerald as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Fitzgerald is so added. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, this is a resolution in support of state legislation that will protect our transportation network companies, TNZ, TNC, and delivery network companies, their workers, who are our Uber and Lyft drivers, our delivery drivers from DoorDash, who play a critical part in our economy in delivery of services. Currently, companies such as Uber, Lyft, DoorDash, and others, and other app-based companies have misclassified their drivers as independent contractors, but these drivers should be classified as employees entitled to fair wages and benefits. In fact, Massachusetts Attorney General filed a lawsuit for wage theft and misclassification because the drivers are employees in 2020, and this lawsuit going to trial on yesterday. By misclassifying their employees as independent contractors, TNC and DNC companies avoided paying millions of dollars in worker compensation, paid family medical leave, which are funded by other companies. The report on the financial assessment of TNC evaluated a period of 10 years. They found that during this 10-year span, more than $105 million was lost in worker compensation. Almost $125 million was lost in unemployment insurance. More than $36 million was lost in paid in family medical leave. This totals more than $266 million owed to Massachusetts, to Massachusetts benefit programs from the period of 2013 to 2023. This proposed legislation, S 627, Senate, House, 1158, an act establishing protection and accountability for TNC and DNC workers, sponsored by our former city council colleague, Senator Lydia Edwards, will prevent price gouging, requires panic buttons for both driver and passenger, provides a pathway to collective bargaining, unionization, all the while maintaining employee status for drivers. It also allows local control and flexibility with regard to the impact of TNC and DNC. In 2023 alone, Uber and Lyft earned $1.4 billion, but contributed nothing to Massachusetts benefit programs, owing the Commonwealth $47 million. This is about fairness. This is about treating our workers with respect and dignity. They have earned it. I hope we can suspend and pass this resolution today in support of this Massachusetts state legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counsel Flynn. I'll just add that I do believe that protecting our workers and easing pathways for employees across the city to join unions is important for myself to do, and also that the drivers, that Counsel Flynn stated a lot of the facts already, but if they're given full status as employees, it's protecting, making sure they have minimum wage protections, appeal protections for worker termination, reimbursement on gas mileage, we all know how expensive gas is, and liability insurance, things that I know they need. I do know that all of the unions agree that allowing our workers to unionize is important. We may have differences of opinion on the language, but I do think it's important that we protect and support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The way I see this breakdown is this really comes down to, there are two bills supporting this. I think everyone's agreement, we need to have a unionization around these jobs. But the bill that Counsel Flynn mentioned, the House 1158, it's really about flexibility versus the employer, employer, employee status, and the worry that you might lose flexibility with that status. I don't feel that is the case. We have to think about this as having the status and what We have to think about this as having the status and what, if we allow the benefits to go but remain the contractor status, we have to think of the effect that it's had on all labor across and what that means in other departments as well. This bill is for all drivers, including the food delivery drivers as well, not just for our transportation drivers. And so I do think that we should support this bill going forward as it gives folks the best protections, stays within what the labor allows and should move forward with. And I believe the flexibility is still there with the status needed to make the unionization happen. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I feel really brave getting up here and saying this, but I'm going to object to a vote today on this. I believe we need to let labor lead the discussions that we're having within this body, and labor here is in disagreement. There's, I've heard from multiple union leaders, there isn't consensus right now around this bill. If I was a representative at the State House, I would probably vote in support of this bill if it was brought to my desk. But we are weighing in, I think, on a labor conversation prior to that labor conversation happening. But I really want to thank Counselor Flynn, I want to thank Counselor Murphy, and I think Counselor Fitzgerald. I think it's really important that we remain civil in like this discussion. But for me, when I haven't, I don't have a single email in my email asking me to support this resolution, but I got over four phone calls about this particular thing of just questioning us weighing in on union strategy prior to, you know, and we are a city council body, and I know that we pass resolutions and we pass resolutions in support of bills. And I stand with workers, I stand with increasing their benefits, I stand with labor, but here standing with labor isn't so clear, and I think we need to take a beat. And I think this needs to be sent to committee for further conversation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. So you're objecting to the suspension of the rules? Okay. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
I guess, clerk, is there any point in discussing this further?
Yeah, because of the objection, we will be sending it to committee. So if you don't want to speak on this matter, you don't have to, but it's okay.
I mean, I'm happy to speak just briefly. You know, I, the first case I had, that I actually dealt with as a first-year law student clerk, dealt with, you know, the issue of whether workers at a banquet hall would be covered by the state tips law, whether they were independent contractors or not. It's a large banquet hall, they employed their own servers, but then they hired additional servers through a temp company, and they didn't feel like they had to share the tips with those servers because they said they didn't employ them. And we ended up losing that case in the New York Supreme Court, so it's called the New York Court of Appeals, but it illustrates how important it is to be, whether you're an independent contractor or you're an employee. And I spent 18 years as an attorney dealing with that issue. A colleague of mine said, if there's any exploitative workplace practice, it started on a farm. And one of those practices you see on a farm is where workers are paid by the piece rate. They get paid by the pound of blueberries they pick. And what happens on those farms is there's no incentive to reduce, keep the amount of workers, you know, limited on their farm. So they have as many people as they can show up, and then they all fight for a share of what they can pick, and what, you know, what they get paid is what they get paid. Here, we've got a similar practice with Uber and Lyft and these companies. They want an unlimited supply of labor. They want, when you look at your phone, they want you to see 100 different cars, you know, that you can choose from. And so they want that labor, but they don't want the responsibility of treating those workers right. You know, I think we've got a case right now going forward in the Superior Court here on whether Uber drivers, you know, are employees or not. I think the Attorney General had her right when they said, when she said, they know they're going to lose this case, and that's why they're trying to, you know, go forward with a ballot measure. I think we have to be vigilant, we have to protect these groups of workers, we have to combat misinformation that we're going to hear a lot of, you know, through this ballot initiative process. And so, you know, I hope we can support, I think, all of our labor leaders around Massachusetts, support treating our, you know, on-demand workers fairly, and this is part of that. So, you know, it looks like we're not going to be voting today, but, you know, I hope we can all join together with our advocates and support, you know, workers who need it the most, which are these Uber, Lyft, drivers, DoorDash workers, you know, who are being taken advantage of. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Mejia, Weber. Please add the Chair. Docket Number 0843 will be sent to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 0844?
Question. What were we adding our name to?
Just to the resolution. So, just for clarity, because there was an objection, we're not voting on the resolution. So it will now, the resolution, instead of being voted on, will be sent to committee.
Okay.
And so just in the same way that you add your name to a docket, that comes, you know, really, the weight of it is what it means, but it will be sent to committee, so for here, or for further work. Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 0844?
Docket Number 0844. Counsel Fernandez Anderson offer the following: Resolution recognizing Malcolm X's birthday, May 19th, as a Boston municipal holiday, and honoring Malcolm X's legacy by establishing and including Malcolm X in Boston's Black Heritage Trail.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, if it's okay, I just wanted to quick comment about the previous docket. I mean, I think that if folks are not prepared to take a vote, they could just vote present, they could vote no, they could vote a lot of things, but going to committee, I look forward to the conversation and understanding exactly what my council colleagues' points or the unions that have expressed concern. But of course, in support of the union members here today, thank you so much for being here and for the fight. Look forward to the conversation. Thank you, Madam President, for occasionally a giant walks among us, and their brilliance, boldness, and bravery is a sight to behold, and their greatness lies in their ability to connect with the communities that created them. They work both for us and with us. Their end goals are never individual. They seek not fame or fortune, but rather the collective liberation of all people from oppression, marginalization, and disenfranchisement. Above all, they are courageous and continue to grow throughout the course of their lives. Such a man, my friends, was Malcolm X. On May 19th, 1925, the then Malcolm Little was born, a child of Garvites. His parents were proud race folks, race folks, as those with black pride would know at the time. And because they were black and fought for their rights under the banner of the Marcus Garve movement, they were persecuted by the powerful forces of racist reaction. The KKK burned their house and quite possibly murdered Malcolm X's father. Once the father was out of the way, the system then broke up their family. Malcolm's mother was committed to a mental hospital. He and his siblings separated. His mother would never quite recover from their heinous and horrific history. This upbringing and background would burn in the brain of Malcolm for the rest of his life. When you are told each and every day of your life that the doors of opportunity are closed to you, and enterprising among us decide that we are going to pry that door open, one way or another. So Malcolm turned to crime. Right here in Boston, in fact, where he lived on Dale Street in Roxbury for several years with his older sister, Ella Collins, Malcolm, as they used to say, made the scene. He worked at Savoy Ballroom on Massav, met Billie Holiday at High Hat, and made friends with people in a variety of fields. Some of these fields were of the illegal kind. In the black experience, particularly for men, prison is often an important part of the story. Many of our brothers are there for reasons similar to Malcolm, meaning they were met with systemic and structural oppression that left them with little in the way of legal mechanisms to advance. In the face of such oppression, one often needs a force that transcends the immediate, and it is when we are at our lowest that such a force often reaches us. Malcolm had courage and the growth mindset to be interested in world affairs, and where anyone was colonized and oppressed, he looked and supported them, supported those who combated that oppression by any means necessary. But Malcolm fought on. He redoubled his efforts with true, as his only weapon, with truth as his only weapon, to, he continued the fight for the freedom of his people. He went from the Nation of Islam, finding solace and faith and strength in his faith. He went from being a black nationalist to a Pan-African revolutionary. He visited Mecca, he performed Hajj, he traveled for months in Africa convening with such legendary African leaders as Nasser of Egypt, Nkruma of Ghana, and Sekhutori of Guinea. He spoke of black America as part of the worldwide African diaspora fighting for its freedom against the forces of racism, imperialism, and capitalism. He even began to have some hope for his white brothers and sisters. He, as miserably as their systems of oppression had devalued our people, he saw hope in the power of Islam to bring people together. For in his serjourn in the Middle East and Northern Africa, he saw Muslims of all colors. He saw hope in youth who were seeking answers outside of the mainstream political and economic paradigms. He saw hope in political radicals of all colors who were throwing off their state support for a status quo and rationalized war and racism. He challenged us to use our voting power wisely, cautioning us against blindly supporting either of the two major political parties, saying that the Republicans were wolves and the Democrats were foxes, and that if you weren't careful, both of them would eat you alive. At the same time, at the time of his death, he was working toward bringing the United States up on charges at the United Nations for crimes against humanity. He spoke of human rights, not civil rights. He was willing to follow the truth wherever it led, in the service of his people and for all humanity. And on February 21st, 1965, at the age of 39, they took his body from this earth. For, at times, a giant walks the earth. Maybe they thought we'd forget, but our memory, when it comes to Brother Malcolm, is eternal, and we will not let him be either forgotten or watered down. So let us begin. And it is up to us, to the rest of us, to put our feet in the tracks they leave behind and carry the struggle. At this time, I would like to ask you, my dear colleagues, to suspend and pass the rules, pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Just want to lift up how important Malcolm X was to Boston's black history and Boston's history and how important he is. And, you know, we, my office and your office, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, have been working on the Black Heritage Trail, and so I think it's, I think it's really important that we know our local history and that we know the important role that Boston played in Malcolm X's life and the role that Malcolm X played in the development of black folks here in the city of Boston. So, thank you for offering this. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Luizhen, and thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, for continuing to recognize black excellence and leadership in the city of Boston. Malcolm X laid the groundwork for black liberation, with much of that work starting right here in Boston. His teachings of empowerment, self-respect, and community continue to resonate with generations of activists, inspiring many to dismantle systems of oppression and work to build a truly equitable society. Our city builds itself as a leader in laying the foundations of a new nation based on freedom and equality for all. Unfortunately, we often forget that this promise was denied to our black residents, even here in Boston, and do not pay due respect to our black residents who have held us to those promises, working tirelessly to push our city and our nation forward. Let us take this opportunity to celebrate Malcolm X's life and legacy and continue his work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the Chair. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you can suspend the rules and pass the Docket Number 800844. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. Docket Number 0844 has been adopted. We are now moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel orders?
Docket Number 0845, Counsel Luizhen for Counsel Durkin. Docket Number 0846, Counsel Luizhen for Counsel Murphy. And Docket Number 0847, Counsel Luizhen for Counsel Mejia.
The Chair moves to passage of Docket Number 0845 to 0847. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The personnel orders have been passed. We are now moving on to green sheets. Is anyone looking to pull anything from the green sheets? The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I'm looking to pull Docket 0529 from Government Operations.
05?
0529?
29.
Oh, the page number.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, will you please read Docket 0529 into the record and if you have the page reference?
Page Number 5 for the green sheets. From the Committee on Government Operations, Docket Number 0529, Message in Order for Your Approval of Home Rule Petition to the General Court Entitled: Petition for a Special Law, An Act Relative to the Creation of a Branch of the Boston Public Library Within an Affordable Housing Development in the Downtown Section of the City of Boston. Filed in the Office of the City Clerk on March 18th, 2024.
Thank you.
The docket is, absent objection, the docket is properly before the body. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Again, Madam President, this is for the West End Library Project, which is a joint initiative of the Office of Housing, the Boston Public Library, the BPDAs, and the Public Facilities Department, to redevelop the current West End branch library into a mixed-use building that will include a new state-of-the-art library branch along with over 100 units of affordable housing above the branch. The process of envisioning this redevelopment has been led by multiple city agencies in close partnership with community stakeholders over several years of public engagement. The 110 units of all affordable housing above a brand-new two-story library branch that will greatly expand and improve services for the neighborhood. Because this is a mixed-use project with a public component, the library branch, and a private component, the affordable housing, legislative relief is required from the state legislature to, for the provisions listed in the home rule petition. I went back and looked at when we have done this before. We did it just a year and a half ago. Docket 0505 for the Chinatown Library was called for the green sheets as well. Docket 0172, the Upphams Corner Library, was suspended and passed the same day. And Docket 0594, which was an affordable housing project, I think, on Cushing Ave, I think that's Dorchester. So if anybody has any questions, happy to answer them, but I would love to provide an opportunity for the district city councilor to provide comments if you allow, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair Coletta, and thank you so much, Council President Luizhen. The redevelopment of the West End Library provides an exciting opportunity to utilize public land to meet public needs. Not only does the city have the opportunity to update a community resource and accomplish affordable housing needs in a dense downtown neighborhood, but this development will serve as an important model for future development of housing on public land. As noted by Council President Luizhen's recent hearing order, there's a lot of interest in this body for public land put to public use. So I'm excited about the West End Library redevelopment project, which gives us an opportunity to meet Boston's immediate needs and set an innovative precedent for equitable housing and development in our city. This project will secure affordable housing for hundreds of Boston's residents in District 8, which will become increasingly inaccessible due to climbing housing costs and a lack of consistent affordability. Affordable housing that centers community, sustainability, and culture in the West End will be fundamental to the future of both the West End and Beacon Hill neighborhoods. As you all know, there was an incredible process, an RFP, that was put out. Affordable housing that centers community, sustainability, and culture in the West End will be fundamental to the future of both the West End and Beacon Hill neighborhoods. As you all know, there was an incredible process, an RFP that was put out, and POA, the Preservation of Affordable Housing, and Cass Capital, their project was chosen for this project, and it's incredibly exciting. We are starting that, and as we move forward with this exciting process, particular attention, as you've heard me say, in this body should be paid to ensuring the West End Library has service when this project is being constructed, but that's a conversation for another day. And thank you so much again to Chair Coletta for bringing this forward. I urge my colleagues to vote in support of this. The start of this process is incredibly important, given that we, and, given that the developer has already been chosen and we need to move forward with getting this done at the State House in order to ensure that this project stays on track. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise, Madam Chair, to support this proposal, and as the City Council that previously represented parts of the Beacon Hill area prior to redistricting, honored to see this project go forward. I want to say thank you to Counselor Durkin. I also want to recognize Counselor Kenzie Bach as well for her work on this, on this long-term project, and it's going to benefit so many people in the West End, in the Beacon Hill, Back Bay area, but residents of Boston. So honored to be part of it and to support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Counselor Durkin, the Chair, Counselor Coletta, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, moves to passage of docket number 0529. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. We are now moving on to late files. I'm informed, Counselor Durkin, is there some?
Yes, I have.
Oh, sorry, you have a green sheet poll?
Yes.
Okay, apologies.
Sorry, it's more of a point of information. 0114 and 0109 are both dockets that we have confirmed through my committee, and I've tried to raise this a couple of weeks behind the scenes, but I just want to make sure to flag it for the clerk that 0114 and 0109 are typos and should be removed from the green sheets. Thank you.
Thank you. We will, Mr. Clerk has that noted, and if we need to do anything next meeting, we will. Awesome. Thank you, Counselor Durkin. We're now moving on to late files. I'm, I am informed by the clerk that there are two late file matters. Personnel order?
One personnel.
Okay. One personnel order and one letter of absence. We will take a vote to add these matters to the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late file matters, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The late file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, please read the first late file matter into the record.
First late file matter, letter from the Office of the Mayor. Please note that I will be out of town on Monday, May 13th, 2024, from 5:00 p.m., returning Monday, May 20th, 2024, at 1:40 p.m. Sincerely, Michelle Wu, Mayor of Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Please read the second late file matter into the record.
Second late file matter is a personnel order for Counselor Louie Jen for Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
Thank you. The Chair moves to passage of these late file matters. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The personnel, the personnel order has been adopted. We are now moving on to the, oh, and the mayor's letter shall be placed on file. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are four additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Point?
Yeah, so I just wanted to suspend the rules and add it to 0857. It was placed in the consent agenda, the resolution that we already presented at the beginning, and I did want to suspend and pass the resolution recognizing the police earlier.
Well, if it's on the consent agenda, we are going to pass it as an entire consent agenda.
But I did want to have the opportunity to add Counselor Flynn. That's why I said, yeah, I know it will be passed.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, can you please add Counselor Flynn?
0857.
Yes, please.
Yep.
Okay. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now moving on to announcements. Please remember that these are for upcoming dates and events. We have some upcoming birthdays. We have Priscilla Tagoe, Megan Kavanaugh, Counselor Murphy, and Joseph, what's the last name?
Mrs. Ju.
The last name, how did I say it? Joseph McEckernan. So happy birthday to our May birthdays. We also have a lunch and learn hosted by Counselor Aral today at, what time? 3:00 p.m. in the Curly Room with international pure water with food from Zaz. I mentioned that it's Haitian Flag Day. We're recognizing Haitian Flag Day. On Friday, we'll be raising the flag at noon, and the Haitian Parade on Sunday at 12:45 in Madison Square. Counselor Murphy, did you have an announcement?
No, Madam.
Okay. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to acknowledge that today, both, two nonprofit organizations that I have been in deep partnership with are celebrating their annual fundraisers. One is Teen Empowerment in Hibernian Hall this evening. Teen Empowerment has been around for almost three decades. We're really working on violence prevention, and I just want to uplift them and their work. And then City Year. If folks don't know, Charlie Rose was one of the long-serving members of City Year, also used to be the owner of Bella Luna. I used to wait tables for him back in the 90s, and so I know he has been deeply rooted in all things that deal with City Year. So I want to rise and congratulate Monica Roberts, who's now the Executive Director for City Year. So tonight, they're going to be also celebrating Artists for Humanity. So want to uplift these two very important nonprofit organizations here in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I think last week I said that it was Louis Alisa's birthday, but it's actually tomorrow, or no, it's this Saturday.
It's the 16th.
Oh, yeah, tomorrow. So it's tomorrow, but his party is Saturday. And Saturday, also Malcolm X. Breakfast at the Reggie Lewis Center in D7, so make sure you got your tickets. It's not that expensive. And Franklin Cummins Tech commencement ceremony is also happening the Saturday. Also, graduate Tufts Cohere graduation ceremony also happening, and I'll be there. The Boston People's Reparations Commission at the Bowlings Building, and the Franklin Park Kite Festival in D7 as well. Be there or be square. Louis Alisa's birthday party at the Thelma Burns at 7:00 p.m. You don't want to miss that. And then on Sunday with my Haitian people, as I said, the Union Parade, so be there. Oh, yeah, that's, that's your people. Okay. So, and the Haitian Parade on Sunday.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to give a shout out. We have a resolution in the consent agenda congratulating Sister Pat Andrews, a sister of St. Joseph in Brighton, and her, the organization that she's led for some time, the Literacy Connection. It's a group that has provided our immigrant neighbors with ESOL and citizenship classes over 38 years. So there will be a celebration of all that work on Sunday, but I just wanted to give a public acknowledgement of all that great work and, and so many hundreds of our immigrant neighbors and friends who were able to benefit from that program. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to recognize someone who has done an exceptional job for the residents of the city, and that is someone that's graduating with their master's degree this weekend from Boston University, Anaquel DeRome. And I, and I just want to highlight, along with Counselor Santana, I just want to highlight the incredible hard work, determination, and discipline of an outstanding city employee. And she worked with me in my office as a high school graduate, and she went on to get her bachelor's degree from Boston, from University of Massachusetts, and then she worked hard and got into the Boston University Master's Program. She lived in South Boston, public housing, and just a wonderful, wonderful person. Congratulations on her.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Also, congratulations on him.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Council President. I wanted to announce that the West End Museum is opening after a long renovation this Wednesday at 5:00 p.m. This is a special invitation for city councilors to attend. As you all may know, they dealt with flooding and other challenges to getting open, and I'm really honored that the most recent artifact in the West End Museum is actually some literature from my campaign. So it's great. They are an incredible group that really shares the history of the West End, and I know we've all talked a lot about the West End's history through urban renewal and otherwise, so it might be a great opportunity for the council to all come together. So it's this Wednesday at 5:00 p.m. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Durkin. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. I believe Friday, May 17th is National Bike to Work Day. I hope people will be joining me, especially Counsel Fitzgerald, who's nodding his head. Yes, I know Counselor Durkin. Yeah, so I think there's events across the city. So Friday morning, hope to, hope to meet up here on our bikes. And then on Saturday, May 18th, Mothers Out Front is, is hosting an event, leading tours throughout Jamaica Plain from 1:00 to 3:00. You should meet at Curtis Hall, and they can help show what people are doing in the neighborhood to fight climate change, you know, in their homes. So hope people can join me for that on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Weber. I also just wanted to shout out my intern in my office, Alice Colins, who'll be graduating from Boston University this weekend as well, formerly an intern in Counsel Box Office. Alice has done tremendous work in our office, and I just wanted to congratulate her and know that there are great things to come in her future. We are now moving on to memorials. If any of my colleagues would like to speak on anyone who's passed, please turn your light on.
I have a few that I want to just talk about briefly. Deja Nicole Jenkins minus, she passed away in 2021, but on the consent agenda, there's a declaration declaring May 13th as May Day. Mae was her nickname, M-A-E. She was born on February 15th, 1999, and she tragically passed away in November 2021 as a victim of domestic violence. This past weekend, there was an event bringing together a lot of domestic violence survivors and the families of the victims, where we uplifted Deja Mae Nicole Jenkins minus, her, her memory, her mother, her father, and her daughter, who was present at the time of, of her death, were all present.